Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the town of McCandless meeting of town council for December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. If all of you could join us as pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And how we always start the meetings of how we conduct them, we will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree. But we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we're all neighbors. Uh, one announcement, uh, we did, council had executive session, uh, at seven o'clock to discuss personnel matters with the town attorney. Moving on, any other announcements for, uh, anyone else here? Seeing none? Okay. Public hearing, Mr. Corporal, you want to call that?
Absolutely. Okay, at this time, good. Um, we will call to order, uh, the public hearing on the ordinance of the town council, the town of McCandless. Amending ordinances number fifteen twenty-nine and fifteen forty-three, re-appropriating certain monies for the current fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Greathouse, I think you have a presentation.
I do. Sandy, it won't let me share my screen. I don't know. Um, this is a housekeeping item, so this is not to be confused with two thousand and twenty-four's budget, um, approval this evening. This is two thousand and twenty-three's reappropriation. This is something we do every year. And it is something that is required under the charter. It requires town council to review budgetary items that exceed five percent and ten thousand dollars over the anticipated budget. And we have greatly reduced the number of items that we've had to report on in recent years because of the budget update in July that we do and subsequent amendment. Um, this evening, we do have a couple revenue items, um, and non-general fund items. We anticipate completing a demolition within the town by December thirty-first, and as historically, um, we have done in the past, we will pull that money from the assessment fund and then do a tax lien. And once that property is sold, um, that money will be recouped by the town. And so we've done this, we did this last year, um, for two properties and we'll do it again hopefully this year. Um, so you see the thirty thousand dollar adjustment from the assessment fund to the general fund in tonight's, um, that reappropriation amendment to the budget. In addition to that, we have a couple line items within the general fund. Um, their financial services, um, the professional services for the towns four oh one A, four oh, four fifty-seven for retirement funds. Um, we had some expenditures that came in that were not received prior to year end that have to be budget amendment. Um, budget amended for this year. And so you see that number. In addition, because of, um, the arbitration with the police department, we had an overage and overtime and outside detail of where and above what we anticipated as well as legal services. Um, and then because of the timing of the arrival of the cars this ye- this year, um, we actually outfitted four cars, two thousand and twenty-two's cars as well as two thousand and twenty-three's within this year's budget. Again, in governmental accounting, when you expense the item is when you have to budget the item, um, and so because of those delays, we have to, uh, make budget amendments. Um, we also have some additions to professional services. This was a, um, an editing error in the July budget amendment, and so I had to correct it here. Um, you see the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This was because of the death of an employee. We had to hire outside services to compensate for that. Um, we also had, um, the enforcement actions is the demolition. This is the general fund account that will be budgeted for that demo, and then the transfer in will fund that thirty thousand dollars from the assessment fund. And then because of the extension of the public works contract as well as some other personnel concerns, we do have an overage in legal services, uh, for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, then you see again the transfer out from the stormwater, I'm sorry, the street and water assessment fund. And that's all we have at the moment. I do need to mention that we have received, and this will go into Ryan's item, I'm kind of stealing his thunder, we have received the, uh, preliminary arbitration agreement. And we have not calculated those two thousand and twenty-three expenses in total as of yet. Um, if they exceed the budget line items, um, in two thousand and twenty-three, we will have to do a later budget amendment in twenty-four during the first month. Um, we anticipate having that done by December twenty-second. Um, and then the budget that we're passing this evening, I'll give you a, uh, uh, early notification on that. Um, we do not have the two thousand and twenty-four results proposed for that as well, and so there, again, possibility for amendment in twenty, in July of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, any questions on the housekeeping item I have in front of you? This is strictly, um, something that's required by the charter. All of these items are either funded from, in the case of the assessment district, from prior year fund balance from other revenue items or from savings and other expenditure items. So there is not an overall increase beyond the assessment district transfer to the funds of the thirty grant. Any questions? Comments?
Yeah.
Um, what, what is foreign fire insurance? The foreign fire insurance is the money that we receive from the state. It is that net effect of zero because we have to, um, declare the revenue as well as the expenditure to the volunteer fire relief association. And so I budgeted it at just under two hundred thousand, I believe. And yes, and what came in at two oh seven. And so that item in particular will be funded by additional revenues, um, that coincide with that amount. It's just a pass through. Yes, that's the better term. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? Thank you much for your time. This will be on the agenda to pass at the next meeting on Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Greathouse. Any, uh, public comments uh, on the proposed budget reappropriation amendment? Seeing none? Anything from council before we close? The hearing is closed. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corporal. Next up is public comment on any agenda items for those that are here. I see familiar faces. We know the drill. No takers tonight? Good. Okay. Very good. Moving on. Uh, the November twenty-seventh meeting minutes were in your packet. Uh, would anyone have any revisions to this? Hearing none? The floor is open to make a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay. Second, Kathy. Everyone in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, reports of committees. Dr. Robb, can you take us through the public safety committee?
I'd be happy to. Uh, start with our staff reports and Chief Hawk. And would you please come up?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Uh, highlights include a bunch of training as usual. We had to recertify our TASER instructors. That happened in, uh, in November. Uh, as you folks are aware, we're doing no shave November and now December. Um, supporting families in need, local families in need. We also have the food drive this, uh, this month and, uh, last month for the North Hills Community Outreach. We're also collecting toys downstairs for Children's Hospital. Uh, it's the presence from police program. I believe it was began, uh, started by Aspen Wall, uh, now Chief Demick down there, uh, years ago. Uh, we collect them down in lobby, get them down to children's post to Christmas. Always a, uh, very, you know, noble cause. I also wanted to say, uh, update on the traffic cameras. I think that, uh, our company just finished the fourth intersection. So we now have four complete.
Which ones are they?
So McKnight at Duncan and McKnight at Pine Creek was the first wave. The second wave that they just completed were Perry at Perrymont and Perry at Ingamar. I believe there's a couple more maybe planned, hopefully in and, you know, um, very soon. Um, many thanks to you folks for supporting it. The town manager for getting behind it and making it happen. Public Works Superintendent, he, he has been just amazing getting this off the ground. And even council person to be, Wal. He organized a meeting where we met with some reps for the cameras that got us in the right path. Um, I think everything has come together nice. So. Any questions from you folks?
I do have a question. Under school, you have school post fifty and school park and walk twenty. Can you explain that?
Certainly. Uh, the posts, we try to, we try to do before and after school. It's a traffic post with car where they might be monitoring speeds. The park and walk is getting out, going into the schools. As you can imagine, NAI and Nash, not so many of those will park and walks because they have school resource officers. But the other schools, when the officers can, they'll stop and just do a walkthrough. Bless you, the students and the staff, and all seem to appreciate it.
So legitimately, it, when the school district has its own force, we'll probably just eliminate the twenty, not the fifty.
Yep. Fair to say, and you know, we could talk to the district if they're, I doubt they'd be still looking for us on a regular basis inside the building since they'd have their own, but, uh, um, you know, we can talk to them if they do, at least initially.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Carl, you've got a question?
Done.
Okay. Well, Ryan's done. I just wanted to announce, um, that, uh, the, we've recently been notified by the arbitrator that was handling the, uh, arbitration of the contract with our McCandless police officers, um, and, uh, you know, we have, uh, received the information. Both attorneys from both sides are still reviewing all the details of it, but we're happy to announce that we've come to a framework for an agreement um, that will move forward with, uh, a contract for our police officers for another. Uh, it's a four-year agreement, three years from here.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the big one that I didn't take a swing at. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief.
Next is the Fire Marshal's report, and it's in your packet. Do you have any questions?
You can ask me since Jeff's not here tonight.
Right.
No question.
Okay. Building permits, again, that's in your packet. Just seems like everybody's putting fences up. Like, it's in your packet. Left solar panels this time. I think there's one. Any questions? Okay, uh, liaison reports, Personnel Board, Mr. Casey.
Well, the information's in your packet, and I'm looking forward to advocate everyone approving the new ordinance at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Do we need any?
It'll be in January.
In January.
If we're just, you know, the, the, the reason we have that as a placeholder was just to to let everyone know that Personnel Board has made a recommendation to the, the council to make some changes to our ordinance uh, related to the Personnel Board and how we hire, uh, police officers. And just wanted to let council be aware of, uh, those detail. Um, as it's currently scheduled, it would be set for a public hearing in, in January eighth, January eighth council meeting with the passage possibly of the second January meeting. Um, based on these class of ordinance that it is. So didn't know if we need to do anything else other than that since council has, you know, received the information and
Okay.
Looking to move forward with it.
Thank you. Okay, Volunteer Firefighters Steering Committee, Ms. Eisenreich.
Uh, we didn't meet this month, so we have no report.
Well, thank you. Uh, any public comment on public safety?
Hi, good evening. Marsha Calianda, one oh five, two nine Abby. Um, I, I, I just have a request for next year that you uh, consider putting the ambulance authority under the Public Safety Committee. I mean, I think that's speaks for itself. Um, so that's my request. I, I do have a question, probably a little bit of out of order, but you don't have a comment on non-agenda items on your bud, in your agenda today, and I hope you
What was that? I'm sorry.
You don't have on the agenda, um, public comment on non-agenda items. So.
Gotcha. We'll, we'll make sure we said.
Okay, thank you. Good. Surprise, surprise. I'm gonna have a comment.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Calianda. That concludes the public safety reports. Uh, I turned it over to Mr. Singer.
Uh, reports of facilities management. Uh, first item here is the staff report, public works activity report. Jeff, you are up.
Great. So we completed the paving program or the leaf program, I'm sorry, on time. We actually finished, uh, the first of December, pretty good last year. I don't think we finished till the middle of December. Um, two thousand and twenty-five paving program, uh, the road list has been finalized. Next step is, uh, will be sent to all the utility vendors, uh, to make sure they have no work planned for next year. Um, the pre-construction meeting, finally, will take place, uh, for the HVAC on Wednesday, uh, the thirteenth, uh, at seven thirty AM. I'm hoping to have that project started within seven days. Uh, the we just submitted for the final phase, uh, for the for two thousand and twenty-three for the traffic cameras, uh, final intersections are Perry and Richard slash Reichold and McKnight in Peoples. That'll wrap up the traffic camera program for this year.
Kudos.
Um, the last thing is we continue to work with gateway engineering. Right now, we're in the steps of finalizing some specifications for both for traffic signals for both the, uh, early grant and the green light go grant. The early grant is the, um, basically upgrading, uh, twenty-one signals. And the green light go grant is the replacement of seven. So that's all I have. And we're ready for snow. I know. I'm hoping we don't get any, but we're ready.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, uh, liaison reports, the environmental advisory committee, Mr. Casey.
Uh, I do have a local, a, a new count on the deer I thought you might want to hear about. We have sixty so far through the end of November. And we had sixty-four in total county December and January last year. So we went from eighteen hundreds to eighteen hunters to twenty-six. We went from uh, s- s- fourteen, fifteen to seventeen properties, so we're getting there.
This is suburban white tail.
Suburban white tail.
Yeah. Yeah. Managing the deal.
I just thought you might like that. And the rest of the information's in your packet.
Good question. Um, the properties that are part of this program, is there a, a place we can go, like, for example, I might know of a neighbor that has a great property that we would all benefit from. Can I go and find out if they're already part of this, or would I have to?
You could call me, or you could call suburban whitetail.
Yeah, but it's not like
Not that many. There's seven of them. Town properties, and then there's only ten that aren't.
Okay.
A lot of times the private individuals don't want to have that information publicly available.
That's, yeah.
Fear.
Same. Don't, don't tell.
People that are feeling.
Yeah. Yeah. When we've approached that, I'm on the committee with Jack, is, you know, we've had, you know, reach out to us and we'll negotiate that through.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would like to make a comment. Um, I saw in your notes, um, they're getting very close to finalize certification for sustainability again.
Yes.
You know, and I think that's something, you know, the environmental committee, we run through that report every month. We hear a little bit, but um, they do some wonderful things, and please let them know, I'm sure, the Senate of all council. We appreciate they do a lot of heavy projects over there.
Jeff, Petro and, and John have worked on this for fourteen months. And we're ninety-nine point eight percent of the way there. So we should be done shortly. And it looks like we'll easily achieve gold. Platinum is, I, I don't know how anybody gets to that level. It's so crazy. So we'll, we'll, we, we're already at gold, but we have to be certified by the certifier, whoever that is.
Yeah, I mean, when it, when it finalizes, I'd love to see them come and, you know, present this to us. Please.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, uh, ad hoc tech committee, it appears there was no meeting.
Correct.
Dr. Robb, sorry. Um, ad hoc, stormwater, myself, there was no meeting as well. Um, at this time, are there any public comments on facilities management? Pending no public comments, I yield to Ms. Cleveland.
Thank you. Uh, now to the reports of the services committee. We will start with, uh, liaison reports from McCandless Township Sanitary Authority and Mr. Casey.
Everything's in your packet, but I would like to bring up something, the, uh, elephant that's in the room, and that is we had a little issue here this last billing cycle. The vendor that M- MTSA changed banks because the original bank was getting out of that business. They changed banks and they got a new vendor to send out the bills. And the new vendor is not doing their job. And is being addressed by MTSA. They did put it out on their website, so anybody goes to web could site, go see the banner at the top. And they're, th- they're waiving all additional fees until the next billing cycle. So, uh, they're doing their best. It wasn't MTSA, it was a, a, a vendor. But we'll get through this. At least there's no sewage problem.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. I was one of the people that called when I got my bill as well. Because I pay my bill as soon as it comes, um, but I appreciate that, and the, in the representative that answered the phone was really helpful in explaining the situation.
Thank you.
So. Um, moving on to the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, um, Ms. I could, Mike is listed here, but I can tell you that the report from the November meeting is in your packet. If you have any questions or comments.
I just wanted to point out, there's a really extensive budget report in there.
There is.
That I would think everybody should take a really close look at.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Singer, if you could report the Northland Public Library Authority.
Uh, the report is in your packets. A little highlight, they are full steam ahead on their new front entrance, uh, plan. Um, there have picked an architect, they're finalizing designs. And they're hoping to finalize and pick their design here in January.
Great, thank you. And do we have any public comments on the services committees? Hearing none, we'll move to all business.
Okay. We have no old business this evening. The, uh, new business is I guess you can give us the twenty-four budget briefing and then we can.
So let's hope this is the last thing you have to do for budget twenty-four until next year. So last meeting, we had the public hearing. We received comments, um, from the public regarding a couple items in the town council budget and the planning and zoning budget as well as the ambulance authority. Um, if you need me to re, um, go back over any of those, please feel free to ask. But this is a slide that was derived from the public hearing slide, um, based on the conversations from council about revisions to the two thousand and twenty-four budget as proposed. And so based on conversations from council, the, um, budget for this evening has a additional ten thousand dollars for the ambulance authority. Has a reduction of roughly forty-four ten from the Heritage and Cultural Center. It has an increase of seventeen thousand five hundred to the fire prevention budget, um, which is in public safety. Um, this is in the capital uh, outlay section of their budget. Miscellaneous items related to the volunteer appreciation dinner were increased by thirty-five hundred. Staff development was increased by two thousand under public works. And the expected retirements as well under public works, there was an addition of twenty-five five. The changes to the CIP program were mainly in future years with one reclassification in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, those are listed here. Again, this evening's budget is for two thousand and twenty-four. The reason that we listed these items is because there is a five-year projection for CIP. Capital Improvements Program Fund. Um, this netted a general fund addition and deletions from the above of an increase and the transfers in from prior year fund balance of fifty-four thousand ninety dollars. This was point three percent of the total general, general fund expenditures and point two percent of the overall budget. The new budget looks like this. And I'm sorry, I just realized I don't have this on the projection. Um, but the total budget is now twenty-eight thousand two hundred and nine dollar, two hundred and nine thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars with those changes.
And just to clarify, this was all talked about, public hearing and all agreed upon. We all be pet nuns and whatnot.
Wow, that's me. Correct. Those were all items that were on a slide from the, from the public hearing. And the new budget ordinance was sent out within the packet. Which you can see. The best way to see it is this number here, this one million four twenty-five was what it was added to, from prior year fund balance to account for the items within the classifications below for public safety and general administration and public works. And culture and rec. Actually, there were changes to the top four categories and expenditures. But again, the net effect of all of those changes is fifty-four thousand and ninety dollars. Do you have any questions on the changes to the budget?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt intently identified ordinance number one five four four. An ordinance on the budget expenditure of all funds for two thousand and twenty-four. The proposed two thousand and twenty-four budget for all funds totals twenty-eight million two hundred and nine thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the proposed two thousand and twenty-four tax military one point two three six remains unchanged from two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Second, Dr. Robb. Um, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Trish, Tricia, thank you. I, you put so much time and effort into this. You know this like the back of your hand. I know we start in late summer doing this, so thank you and your team. It is thankless work, but we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We have a few openings. Um, first up is an opening on the planning commission.
Uh, as the planning commissioner liaison, uh, we held interviews, and there was a memo that went around with our recommendations. Um, so I will make a motion to appoint Brendan O'Donnell and Mark Jones to the planning commission for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay, second. Is that Casey? Okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, we'd like to make the UCC committee motion.
I'll make it. Norm, Norman Bogler Jr., Norm Bogler. Norman Bogler again. Okay. A motion to appoint Norman Bogler Junior to the Uniform Construction Code Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second.
Second, Dr. Rock. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Jack?
I make this one. Motion to appoint Patrick M. Seaman to the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. I'd like to follow up for public comment. It wasn't on the agenda.
Marsha Calianda, you know. Um, I just, I can't come to next week's meeting because, uh, we have the ambulance authority meeting. Uh, so I want to take this time to thank Ms. Eisenreich, Mr. Carroll, Dr. Robb, uh, as outgoing members, uh, of council, to thank them for their work, efforts. Thank everyone on council. Uh, you may not believe this, but there are times I don't always agree with you, but I, I, I want to, it's an understatement, all right? But I do want to thank you. It, it is a lot of work that you all put into it, and, um, most of the people in this town don't understand what goes on. Um, the, the, the few of us that do come to the meetings understand that, um, you know, learning how the sausage is made. learning how the sausage is made isn't always pretty, but it has to get done. And so thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Any other general comments? Seeing none, meeting of the year.
Thirty minutes.
Wow, the record.
Somebody didn't get my job.